Thanks for joining. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Oh, hey, good evening. Yeah, so sometimes uh these sessions take a little bit for people to join this time of evening. But uh we are recording it, so I'm I'm I think I'll give it another couple of minutes before we start. If that's okay, and uh now we'll get going. I'm gonna share my screen. I've got a new I've got a new laptop and to configure it. I haven't done a session with this one yet, so hopefully everything will work out here. Can you see my screen?
Yep.
Can see there. Yeah, there's a PowerPoint right there. All right. Give it one more minute. Get going. Might just be the three of us for a little bit, but people will come in, I'm sure. All right, well, let's let's get going. Um, because this could take um mostly, I've done this one a few times. Um, so welcome to this is IBA East Tennessee. Uh, monthly study session. Uh, we haven't done one since February, but we're gonna try to get back on the uh on the monthly uh monthly cadence for these. Um, but this particular one uh backed by popular demand is uh the business analysis certification overview and uh I'm glad to do this one. This is one I really enjoy. Uh, you know, uh, talking about business analysis certification. My name's David Thompson. The we've got some certifications uh from IBA, the C-BAP. Uh, of course, and a CPOA, which is a certified product owner analysis AAC, and also have some Scrum Alliance certifications as well. But uh, yeah, so what we'll do tonight is to use my uh some slides I put together to kind of talk through some some things about about the business analysis certification as well as an overview of some study techniques and tips, uh, some things I've learned along the way and gotten feedback from a lot of folks on uh on their thoughts as well. So a collection of of uh tips and tricks on studying, things to study, the the structure of the core business analysis certification exams. We're gonna focus tonight on IBA's core core certification exam, so we'll talk about some of the other ones. There's some good information in here. So with that, let's get started. Let's see. Click it this way. I'm having trouble with this slideshow, so I'll just go through the slides this way. Uh, so here's a this is I love this graphic they have at IBA. Uh, I found when I was updating this presentation. Why get certified in business analysis? And as you can see, this is like a mixing board or something was for sounder, and they've they've changed the names on it. And I really like this. This graphic uh where it says you're turning everything up to the maximum, you know, uh, business analysis certification or any certification in particular and professional certifications really become your calling card. Um, I remember years ago, uh, I I I learned a lot about this particularly. This is a long time ago. I learned a lot about this particular software program. I I knew uh, I knew it in and out and uh and I was talking to one of my coworkers. I said, maybe we should get certified in this, you know, it's it would be really good. He said, why do we need to get certified? Uh, I was like, yeah, you're right. It's just a lot of time and expense and everything. So I never got certified until I moved on from that job and got into consulting. And uh, and my my manager in the consulting company said, we need you to go get your certifications. And I said, oh, you know, we don't have to get certified, do we? And he said, yeah, yeah, you do. We we, you know, go visit clients and we tell them we're gonna bring you in to do work for them. And uh having a certification shows that you know your stuff. Um, you know, sometimes, you know, people get certifications and that you know, maybe they don't really know their stuff, but it certainly helps them to say, ah, if they've been through, they've studied, they've been through the test, they've got the experience, so so they're certified. And it helps you uh meet your customers' needs or your company's needs uh, you know, better. You learn more. There's some really some other good benefits of certification. This is from IBA's Global State of Business Analysis Report from 2022. I looked for a newer version of this, but I I don't see one. Uh, I don't think there's a newer version of this uh, this particular one, but this is about the benefits of certification. I love this graphic because it talks about uh, one of the big things is the higher confidence at work. You know, when you know uh, we know your domain, you know, you know, business analysis, you know what the Babac says about things, you know, the Babac is its own world. Uh, you know, things that have the way they're documented, the Babac isn't really totally the way things work in a real world that we're in and working. But um, it it does help you give a uh more confidence at work. I I can attest to that. Um, it helps your skills, up skills. If you get a one of the other certifications like product owner analysis or agile analysis. Um, some people use it to help find a new job. Uh, if you are shopping for a job, you know, that that is something that uh you know, a lot of people look for, you know, they I've seen that on uh, you know, on job postings before that they would like you to have some sort of uh, you know, business analysis certification, feel like appropriate job. So that's that's something. Uh, salary increase, apparently, apparently salary increase. Um, you know, I I remember when I got my C-BAP, I was so proud of myself, and I thought for some reason I would get uh, a huge salary increase. Uh, I didn't, but um, you know, your mileage may vary with with your company. I worked so hard on that, and I was quite disappointed when I didn't get a big raise for getting my C-BAP, but uh but uh, anyway, that that goes, that it could change at your at your work, who knows? But that's that is something some people do see, you get better salary promotion, maybe. Uh, these are just some things that people have uh ranked as benefits of certification. Um, and then this is another graphic I liked from the same report about how how uh quickly did you see the benefits of that? Um, and you know, a lot of people experienced that immediate or one to six month improvement uh and and seeing those benefits after getting the certifications. And it also says that ninety-two percent of the folks that responded to the survey recommend getting certifications for career development. So there's some good things. It's it does make it worth the time. And believe me, you know, getting a product, I mean, a business analysis certification is is a huge time commitment. And so not only that, a big financial commitment as well. And we'll talk about some of that. First, um, we are IBA, you know, we're the IBA of East Tennessee, but um, do want to mention there are other business analysis certifications that are really important. Um, I wanted to specifically mention the PMI's PMI PBA. I know a couple of folks that have have gotten this one. Um, and it's a really, really great certification. It doesn't necessarily follow our Babac. Um, but you know, some of the same concepts are there, and really, you know, this would be recommended for someone who is interested in more of a project management focus. Maybe they're on a project management uh career path, and maybe they think, well, I'm a BA now, but someday I want to do project management. Why you would want to do that? I have no idea, but but that's just a little joke I have, but um but nevertheless, um, the PMI has a good certification. You can see the costs of it. Um, you know, it's a, you know, uh it's two hundred and forty minute test. That is a big, big uh test, you know, uh, big four hour commitment on the on the duration of the test. You don't have to take the entire time uh to do that, of course, but there are two hundred questions, so it's a it's a big big bunch of uh questions on that. Uh, it's also a very expensive one. Um, you know, if you're not a member of PMI, you can see they make it just uh, just a dollar, a dollar less if you're a PMI member. Um, because you you buy your PMI membership and you pay for the exam and it costs you five hundred and fifty-four dollars versus five hundred and fifty-five if you're not a member. But if you're getting the PMI certification for for uh professional business analysis, why not be a member of PMI? So um uh, there's a prep course I found online at PM Training dot com. It's a ninety day access online course. It's three hundred and forty-eight, which is pretty pretty uh low price as compared to some of the IBA um prep courses that you'll see I'll talk about later. Um, but uh, we're we're great partners with PMI. We uh, we do, for example, uh, we have something I think coming up this year. I'm no longer on the I'm the past president of East Tennessee IBA, but um uh, talking to some of my colleagues, they are planning a a joint uh session with our local PMI chapter as well. So the look for that to come on your announcements, but uh, we do a lot of uh of sessions with PMI. We've done several in the past few years with with our IBA chapter, but that's something to consider. Now let's get into the IBA certification. So there's three core IBA business analysis certifications. Um, the first is the ECBA. That's the entry level. Uh, CCBA is a certificate of uh capability in business analysis, and then there's C-BAP. Uh, it is the uh certified business analysis professional, and you can kind of see it if if you remember like the the medals in at the Olympics, you know, the bronze medal for the ECBA essentially, oops, here I am editing my uh my presentation here. Uh, like a bronze level for the ECBA, which is a great certification. We'll talk a little bit more about that. CCBA is kind of the silver level and the gold is the C-BAP. Um, every one of these tests gets progressively harder, requires more experience, and costs a little bit more. We'll we'll go over those. So these are these are ones we're really probably primarily gonna focus on in this presentation. Uh, there are other IBA certifications you probably saw on the cover sheet. I I happen to have two of them. I have the CPOA, which is the Product Ownership Analysis Certification, and the Agile Analysis Certification. Uh, maybe someday I'll do the business data analytics. Um, I'm not not really thinking about taking the cybersecurity analysis certification, but these are those other certifications uh from IBA that they offer. I'll give you a little bit of information about those as well. Um, comparing the IBA course, by the way, if you have any questions, please speak up. There's uh no problem there. I I sometimes miss if you raise your hand or something, but please feel free to speak up if there are any questions. Um, and I and let me know if I talk too fast, because I've I've done this uh this session a few times, and sometimes I talk fast. Um, but anyways, going back to comparing the the requirements for each level of certification, you can see here that ECBA you don't really have to be a BA. You don't have to demonstrate any work history being a BA. You don't have to take any professional development. Um, you don't have to have any experience. Um, you know, uh, the exam is pretty simple. It's one hour, fifty multiple choice questions. Uh, so you know, it's pretty straight ahead. Somebody can get uh, somebody can get certified uh with just a minimal amount of training, which is you know, kind of a good or bad thing too, when you think about it. Um, you know, just because someone has an ECBA, it, you know, doesn't necessarily mean they have a work history of being a BA or any experience or any professional development. So something to think about. Um, CCBA, um, that requires uh three thousand seven hundred and fifty hours of work history. And and thing with these work histories, you you can't just say I have three thousand seven hundred and fifty hours. Uh, you have to, you have to show what projects you've worked on and what knowledge areas uh, according to the Babac, you know, what different knowledge areas in the Babac. And you have to, you know, have references to they they want you who your project manager or your manager was during that. Uh, and they want their email. Uh, they may or may not call them. I I was lucky and nobody called me because I was worried it might get audited, but uh when they did that, I mean, I was straight ahead. Luckily, when I was uh working on my C-BAP, uh, I had worked for the same company for over ten years, so I had I had um emails that I could reference to, you know, from past projects and stuff to help me illustrate that I I had spent that amount of time working on this kind of project. So that was good. The CCBA, you know, they want you to have two or three years of experience or more. Um, the exam, they give you three hours to complete it. There are a hundred and thirty multiple choice questions and scenarios. Um, the C-BAP is a little bit different, obviously, more hours, more professional development needed before you take that. And uh and then experience five or more years, three and a half hour duration, and then a hundred and twenty multiple choice questions. There are fewer questions, but there are case studies which you can have a case study which you have to read, and then there are several questions off of that. Any questions? All right, keep going. Um, so that's the that's the core requirements. That's the requirements for the core certifications. Here's a little difference on the costs. Um, always, I say, the IBA membership, a hundred and thirty-nine dollars a year is worth it. Uh, even if you're not getting certified, of course, because you have access to everything that, you know, with IBA, the knowledge uh, knowledge articles they have, everything is great that you can do with IBA, but um, they really make it worth your while if you're planning on getting certified. So you can see the difference in the fee for member versus non-member for each of these uh is covered by your IBA membership. So uh, you know, joining IBA and paying the exam fee um, makes it easy. So ECBA, there's no application fee because there's really no application, no detailed application like the others. Uh, you know, so you can see the costs here. I will I won't read through all of them, but um, one one note that though is um, if you're to planning to take the the ECBA exam is changing in July. I'll talk a little bit more about that. But if you take it now and you ref and you would or fail it, um, they would they'll give you can basically take it for free through July eighteenth. If you had, you could retake it for free if you fail it between now and July eighteenth, then they're changing the exam. So I think that's when that when that ends. So check the IBA's website if you're interested in taking ECBA, but you need to do it within the next month before the exam change, if you want to take advantage of that. Uh, but yeah, here are the costs. You can see the significantly uh more expensive uh as you get in the CCP, CCBA and C-BAP. So, yeah, so it's a big commitment. Um, if your company pays for it, great, but if you have to shell it out of your pocket yourself, then uh, it's, you know, you'd want to make sure you pass it so you don't have to spend, you know, three hundred or four hundred and fifty dollars uh to to retake the test. So it's worth it spending the time. Uh, here's just a quick, you know, we talked about those other specialized certifications from IBA. None of those have an application fee. Um, and then there the fees are pretty straightforward for all of them. You pick the one you want to do. Um, they do charge you, you know, if you uh have to obviously retake the exam. Knock on wood, I've never had to retake one. Uh, so uh, I always afraid to have to explain to my wife why I have to spend, you know, I so I so why I study so hard uh when I'm taking these exams. But uh, yeah, here's the here's the cost of all those. Not bad at all. It's a good, it's a good certification to get. All right. So here's here's what I talk about, the little more details about the ECBA, the rest of them. ECBA, um, we talked before, people that are ready to develop their business analysis skills. So you get a certification. It don't don't necessarily mean that you have to uh have have good experience and uh and and being a business analyst to get that certification. So formerly you had to get twenty-one hours. They've made the ECBA progressively easier um over time. So uh, like I said, they are changing the um uh, well, as of April twenty-sixth, and forgive me, that was April twenty-sixth of last year. Um, they streamline the process. They made it easier for you to to get to the ECPA, but their change in ECPA again with a new new test, new so something to keep in mind. If you're planning to take these ECBA, decide whether you're gonna take it before or after July twentieth. I think it's July twenty-first next month. So all right, and uh, because by the way, for ECBA, if you um, if you look at um IBA's website about the ECBA certification, they have two different um guides based on whether you're gonna take it before or after July twenty. CCBA, um, you know, the CCBA, you know, two or three, we talked about two or three years of practical business analysis experience in here. Um, here's where you kind of break down the work history. It has to be within the last seven years. You know, I told you before, when I was uh putting in my application for taking a C-BAP, um, I was plugging things into my into my application and they weren't taken because I was putting things, you know, that were were longer. The C-BAP is like ten years, I think. Yeah. C-BAP is ten years. I was plugging things in. There were over ten years, and uh, it wasn't counting them because they weren't within the certain time, but with their, you know, the knowledge areas in the in the Babac has to have to align with a certain number of hours. So uh, same same with the C-BAP. So there's the application fees again, uh, and the duration. As I said, the IBA membership makes it worthwhile to save money on those on those expenses. So um, and again, over over five years of practical experience is is really good for a C-BAP. And uh, again, the um, there are fewer questions on the C-BAP, but like I said, you have to read through case studies, and believe me, the case studies are not easy. Um, that was something I I I sweated over when I was taking the C-BAP uh, what's the case study? So uh, the CCBA doesn't have the doesn't have the uh big case studies. So so here's, oh, yes, beginning July twenty-first. Here is the new updated um exam uh guide for the ECBA. So this is just the ECBA. So these are the topics that it covers, and as you can see, understanding business analysis is a big part of that. Um, so you know, make sure when you're preparing for that, there's there's a preparation guide and their books to help you study for ECBA. Um, but this is about where the questions fall and the percentage wise. So um, you know, definitely on the core concept model and uh more of the, you know, the overall view of what uh, of what the Babac has, not not getting into the details of the different knowledge areas or the techniques, you'll notice. Um, the knowledge areas for the CCBA and C-BAP, I'm pretty sure this is still correct. Um, they change sometimes. Uh, you'll see different different percentages from different person, but you can see, as you can see, um, what I like to tell people for CCBA and C-BAP, you really want to study this knowledge area for requirements, analysis and design definition. That is uh, that is a big part of that. Um, also, um, you know, definitely you can see the differences between like illustration and collaboration is really high for CCBA, whereas not so high for the C-BAP. So uh, C-BAP, you'll you'll talk a lot more about techniques and you know, techniques as they apply to the different knowledge areas, and definitely solution evaluation is a big one for C-BAP as opposed to CCBA. You'll notice um when they're when you have prep courses, a lot of them are are for CC CCBA and C-BAP. Uh, in fact, I took a prep course. We'll talk a little bit more about prep courses. But um, you know, my my course was CCBA and C-BAP. And out of the like six or eight people in a class, only one of them was planning to take the CCBA. And I really want, why don't you just do the C-BAP, you know, it's uh um, you know, you're studying this anyway, might as well just take the CC- CCBA, but you'll see that a lot. In fact, this is a, this is a book that I I I'm, you know, I I recommend Watermark because they helped me with all my BA studies except for product owner analysis, which they don't have a product owner analysis prep course, but or a study exam. At least they, the last time I looked, they did. But um yeah, definitely, uh, the C-BAP certification guide uh is a big, big help to get prepared. Obviously, the Babac, if you're a member of IBA, you get a PDF version of the Babac. Um, and um, definitely the Babac, you'll see in my prep, you definitely want to use the Babac. Uh, I also want to get if you, there are other guides out there. I recommend the Watermark. Uh, they don't pay me. Um, there's other materials like their flashcards and their study tables. Um, as you get into them, you'll realize that those are valuable tools. Um, CC uh, Watermark also has um different study exams like I was mentioning. Um, they you subscribe to them, you know, I like, uh, I was recommended to a colleague uh who studied for the ECBA. Thirty days um uh, access to the study exams. These are exam simulations and study study guides for specifically for those exams. Um, it's it's worthwhile investment. Um, so I I repurchased these several times, oh, well, two or three times as I was preparing for my C-BAP because uh, I kept rescheduling my exam. I was waiting and waiting as life was going on. So uh, these are great, great way to prepare. Um, the costs are a little bit more for, you see, I just changed it. Uh, CCBA is ninety-nine dollars uh for not thirty days access. So it's a another investment, same with the CC C-BAP. It's uh same cost, but um, Watermark is, I use Watermark and I really got um value out of that. So might check that out if you're interested. I'll definitely use it, leveraging practice exams as always a part of my my prep. Of course, like I said, when I did the um, product owner analysis, there wasn't a practice exam. Um, here's an example timeline I would recommend if you're planning to take the ECBA. And the first thing is um, I always say, take, give yourself one to two weeks to read the Babac cover to cover and really read it, not just gimmick, but just read through it. Um, you don't have to memorize it, but just read through it. And then spend time on the uh, the business analysis key concepts and and go over the knowledge areas, because even though they specifically focus on all of the knowledge areas, it does give you great context and and it's good to to go through them and have a a really good understanding um of those. You know, I think I always um have said that twelve weeks to prepare for the ECBA, it should get you well-prepared to take and pass that test. Um, so um, but you know, I always say, read the Babac cover to cover for sure. Um, now for uh, for the CCBA or C-BAP, very similar. Uh, you can see how I broke it down into really digging in to each of the the knowledge areas. Um, and also um, uh, the techniques, spending a week on Um and also um uh the techniques, spending a week on techniques or fifty techniques. Learn, you don't have to learn them all inside and out, but just have an understanding of what they are at the high level, at the very least, and some of them really knowing the details and. Uh yeah, there's a lot of good information there. Uh spending time doing focus practice exams, uh those practice exams. Uh taking them and figuring out, great thing about, at least, I don't know about the other online exams, I, like I said, I had good, good luck with the Watermark exam. But um they tell you what you're, what you missed, what you maybe not be doing so good in, and um they. Uh allow you to take a test that focuses on that area. So I think the first time I took a, oh, my CBAP. Prep exam on the Watermark, just to test my knowledge, and I'd just gone through a bootcamp, uh or not bootcamp, but a, a, a four-day course. Uh to prep for it, I guess, I guess you call it bootcamp, but I took my first exam and I got like a fifty or a sixty, and I was really disappointed. Uh the, the prep exams are a lot more harder than, a lot harder than um than the exam itself. They really helped you to pre, help you to prepare, so. Uh but yeah, practice exams, reviews, going back and going back, and I'd say fifteen weeks of focus, and this is focus, is not just casually. You know, get to it. What I was doing is, uh I was, I was getting to work an hour early, and I was reading the Babac. Taking test exams to do that, to prepare, so it's worth the extra effort. Um like I mentioned, I, I did a, um a certification prep class. If you go to this link and uh. We should be able to provide to you these, these slides in PDF format. Um I'm not sure if they're going to put them on the website or. Uh or send them around, but nevertheless, um. The, I, this is, I, I would definitely don't take a certification course unless they're one of IBAs and endorsed providers. Uh because uh there are some scams out there, um you know. Beware of classes that aren't IB endorsed, they'll make big promises, and uh you know, there's no substitute cramming is not. You know, not really a substitute. YouTube videos are not a substitute, so. Uh there are different options, you know, uh different expenses. I'll, I'll break down some of those expenses as well. You know, here's a few benefits of the certification prep class. They're intense focus. Um the instructors typically have had. Multiple students going through that, they've heard feedback, um they, they know exactly what to prepare on. Uh you can, you can have specific uh case studies to practice on. They do a deep dive. Um financial calculations, particularly if you're taking the CBAP, um is something uh that you, that this gives you an opportunity to get. I'm. I'm not so good in math. Um I always need Excel, and so uh understanding financial calculations. Um for example, ORI or ROI calculations, and figuring all that out, uh something that this helped me with, understanding those. And a lot of times the fees um include things like, um you know, some support materials. So it's worthwhile checking out prep classes. Um here's the sample costs of prep classes, um a few places to take, take a look at simply, excuse me, simply learn. Um the, when I checked, their costs were eight hundred seventy-three dollars uh for like eight or sixteen week online. Um depending on how many days a week, um and uh eight seventy-three, A- Adaptive USA. Um they have a special, I think they have a special all the time uh for, for training. When I was looking to do a, a prep class. It was down to me between Adaptive US and Watermark Learning. Uh and I have to be honest with you, Adaptive was just really aggressive and um. Were telling me why they were better than Watermark and uh, and how less expensive they were. And so that helped me decide to go with Watermark, uh so, and I'm glad I did. Watermark was a significant higher investment for me, but it was certainly worth it. I had four days online, which fulfilled my um, my uh classroom. Learning requirement for the CBAP as well, and uh really helped me um prepare. It was definitely more expensive, but it was worth it for me. Your mileage may vary, though, of course, so up to you. Okay. Talking about those practice exams, uh I probably should put this a little earlier, because I was talking about the practice exams a little bit ago, but um. All of these companies provide practice exams, Watermark, you did, which is what we're seeing the sample of. Like Udemy, I don't know how to pronounce that, but Ecam, these are some, I'll list it here that I found CBAP practice exams for. They may have ECBA, um but not, not hundred percent sure on all of them. But here's an example, this is why I like these. Um here's an example, you know, this is one I got wrong. Um you read the, read the thing, uh screen, Susan is a business analyst developing screen mockup for key stakeholders showing fields from a data model. Which of the following is true? And I thought, oh, I'd see, definitely. And uh. I said, this is potentially correct, but you know, here's why it's not correct, and here's why this is a better solution. This is gold to me. This shows me like, oh, okay, I, I understand, you know. I learned from this that you're not picking the first one. You have to really think about what the answer is. You have to, you know. And so I knew right away, it tells you where in a Babac to find this and what, what table to find. This is a, and Watermark's study guide, of course, but. Um this was certainly super helpful for me, you know. Um so this is, you know, what you get with a practice exam. So think, really think about that if you're. If you're um planning on to, uh taking that. Okay, so here, here's the fun part, the certification application process. Um. This is just for CCPA and CBAP. ECBA doesn't require the application, like I said before, but. You can go um to click on this link and it'll take you to um. It'll take you to the application process, but yeah, I tell people is. Hey, if you're PPA and you think one day, or PM or whatever, you think you one day want to take um uh a certification. Document what you're working on, especially if you've moved from company to company or project to project. Uh if you're a consultant or something, uh over the, over a few years, you know, you need to be able to refer back to what you worked on. And who you worked with at, at some time, you know, because it does want to know who your project manager or manager was. Um but um, you know, there's a template that is available from IBAs website to, to help you track. Your, your knowledge areas, like a Excel spreadsheet. Um also keep track of any of the training that you've had. Uh that's a, that's a key if you're coming to something like this where we're training on a topic. Um if there's a CBAP in there, ask, ask whoever's given the, the uh, the talk. Uh for uh, you know, if it's a session, study session such as this, uh ask him to provide you with. Can you add credit? They'll, you'll be able to leverage that. Um if a CBAP is training, uh then, then you're, you know. And, and they're talking about um IBA, Babac topics, then you should, should be able to get credit for that, so. Uh if you're not a member of IBA yet, you know, it'll save you the exam fees, but it's also a great way to. To find what's going on in the world. I tell somebody, if you're ever bored and can't sleep, there's probably an IBA. Uh chapter meeting going on somewhere in the world. Um or you, or you just need to brush up on certain skill, there, a lot of the chapters have really great things. A lot of them have study sessions too, that work focusing on getting people through a certification, so. Something to think about. Fill out the application, pay the application fee, schedule your exam once you're approved. Um here's some quick studying strategies, um. You know, figure out a pace that works best, best for your, your life. You know, I said I'd get to work an hour early. That doesn't work for everybody. Um I'm a morning person, so that, that worked out for me, that helped me out. Uh don't rush, don't. It's a good idea to put something on the calendar and start working towards that goal, but if you're not ready, reschedule it. You know, um I had to reschedule mine several times. I, I got a new job, I moved, I bought a house. You know, all that stuff was happening while I was trying to prepare for my CBAP. Uh and I've said this before, if you've heard me talk about the topic, I, I got down to, when you, when you get approved to take the, the CCPA and CBAP. Or CBAP, you have one year for approval, and if you don't take the exam. Within that one year, you have to reapply and you have to repay your application fee. So I was down to the last day that I could take and pass the exam, or else I was going to have to reapply. And that wasn't going to be a good conversation to have with my wife, why I had to spend that money at Christmas time, no one, no less. Um and so, yeah, uh but I, that said. Um I kept Kevin to push it off and reschedule it till I was really focused and ready. So um. You know, I did all that study and like those timelines I suggest, but um I did it more spread out. Anyway, but take advantage of anything, really study the techniques, the fifty techniques, uh especially the CCPA and CBAP. And really, there's intense focus of the practice exams. If you get the practice exams, that really helps out, really helps out, so. Let's see. So those are good, some good strategies. Also, um find some folks to study with, you know. Usually, there are. Um IBA chapters or people you work with that are, that are, you know. Having study sessions or someone's like, you know, I want to take that too. I, I know a couple of people that are planning to take the CBAP this year, and uh. You know, I've had people reach out to me and say, help me, help me study. I want to review some things with you. I'm glad to help. Um and uh it's always good for me to brush up as well, you know, and uh more I teach classes like this. And uh, and especially the ones about the knowledge, uh different knowledge areas of the IBA or different topics, it just helps me. Uh as a business analyst myself, so I'm glad to, to teach and share my knowledge, that's. I really love that. Um there are um some mnemonics that you'll find on the web, and especially if you take. I don't know about the other company, but I know Watermark has these mnemonics to help you, help you learn, um you know, different. Different uh things that will help you with your exam. Uh here's one about uh different attributes. Uh uh they have a mnemonic to bring over for that, so. It's fun things that'll help you remember. Your local chapter and other chapters, like I said before, there's usually someone on, on a daily basis having some sort of study. Or some kind of topic to help review, but definitely reach out to those who have taken the exam. They'll be able to give. Give you some ideas as well. I suggest no shortcuts, don't try to cram, really take your time, really read the Babac. Um people say, you know, I try to read this before I go to bed and I fall asleep. Yeah, the Babac is the sure cure for insomnia. Uh so really wake up and sit at your desk with a bright light on it and try to focus on it, uh that's what, and don't try to. Consume the whole thing. It's not a buffet. It's more uh meal, one meal at a time with the Babac for sure. Uh yeah, yeah, there's a, uh joining IBA with the PDF version, like I mentioned, if you get, you get when you're IBA member, the Bab, of the Babac. You Ctrl F, I, I love, I bring the Babac up all the time uh on my desktop and Ctrl F to find whatever I'm looking for, you know, that's great. Really, if you're uh studying for CCPA or CBAP, learn the inputs, tasks and outputs of each knowledge area. And um if you've looked through the Babac, you know what those are, uh really internalize them, remember them and understand them. Uh definitely understand that, the techniques, not just what they are, but when you would use them. Now read through the Babac, it'll tell you um. It'll tell you um for this knowledge area, what some of the techniques you will use, uh for example, and that's a good one. Uh obviously prep classes and any of those uh things like the study tables or the. Flashcards or whatever you can get your hands on are, are really good. Uh if you have LinkedIn Premium, it's been a while since I've looked at these, but Jamie Champagne, she's like a. Uh you know, kind of celebrity BA, uh she does a lot of teaching um on business analysis, but she's got some exam prep videos. Um so one of the things she talks about though is a lot of memorization. And that just didn't work for me, memorizing things and writing things down as you're starting the exam. Uh yeah, I, that didn't quite work for me, but I did find her, her tips helpful. Uh I reviewed those before I took the CBAP, so it's been a few years though. I, I'm, I'm sure those are probably still out there, but you might want to check. Um the IBA website has blueprints for all the exams too, and that's good. And uh, one thing my um. My, my uh instructor, when I took my prep class, talked about was listen to classical music. They said it's the Mozart effect. You don't necessarily have, have to listen to classical, but listen to something helps you. Listen to music kind of helps your brain. That's something. Uh I wanted to throw in there and it, it worked for me, uh so there you go. Here's just a very rough uh idea of what a certification exam looks like. Have you ever taken an online certification? Um that's uh, that's kind of what it looks like. And if you're in person, um you know, at a, at a exam. Exam company, you know. That you'll have a screen, your computer screen, and you'll, you'll see it very similar to this. The thing about it is you'll. You'll, you'll be able to select which answer, there'll be a question and there'll be an answer, and you have a navigation, you can go back and forth if you need to. You can flag certain questions, and I, when I took my CBAP, I, I flagged a ton of questions that I wasn't quite sure of, and as I got further into it. I um. I was like, okay, I know what that was, and I went back and checked them, and then some of them, I was just like. I'm gonna, at the end of my exam, I'm gonna spend as much time as I can, and I didn't take up the whole time, but I came close to it. And uh, you know, to, but I, I did that by flagging the questions I wasn't comfortable with, so. Uh so there's that, um. Here's where we talk about prep before they actually take an exam, the test time. Um I'm a morning person and uh. And the morning worked best for me, and so I knew, you know, I told you I got down to the last day. And when I was scheduling the exam, I realized, uh you know, it was going to be the following week, but it was the last day I was able to take the test. Um I, I realized that where I wanted to take this test and the time I wanted to take it at was not available. Where I live in Knoxville, the local place was not, didn't have a slot for me at that time, and I was like, what am I gonna do? Uh so I took the, ended up taking the exam in the Asheville, North Carolina, which is about an hour and a half, two-hour drive from here. Two-hour plus drive, I think, um from here, and uh. I went the night before, I stayed in a hotel and I, you know, I studied the night before, uh just final prep. The night before, I went in the next morning and took the test, but I wanted to take it in the morning because I'm a morning person. So I knew if I took it in the afternoon, no, uh I would be, I'd not be able to get through it, so. Um ECBA is an exam, it's an exam that you have to take online. There's no, you can't go to a local place to take it, so when you take a, an online exam, it's really specific about what you do. Um you have to be in a room that basically has nothing in it. Um and you know, it's like an empty conference room with no, no whiteboards or something, everything covered up. It's really tough. I luckily, we have like a screen and porch. And uh when I took my uh, my Agile Analysis and my uh Product Owner Analysis. I, I did out there, we just have a couch and a table essentially out there, and uh uh that's. There was nothing out there. They made me hold my, my laptop so that they could view with the camera under the table that I was, I was using. Uh and all around the room to make sure that there was nothing that I was using for notes or anything like that, so it's kind of a pain. We're, to be honest, um you know, you have to have a webcam and speakers, you have to have a stable, um stable internet connection. That's, that's good. If you drop your connection, that could be really, very tough. So uh I heard one person say, they, they were reading through the questions and they were reading them to themselves, but they were moving their lips as they were reading the questions. And they said, stop, what are you doing? Who are you talking to? And they said, I'm not talking to anybody, I'm just reading these questions. And I said, well, stop moving your lips. So that's something to think about it, when you're taking an online exam, but. I, I definitely recommend going to a testing center for CCPA or CBAP. You know, they have, this is, this is really what these look like. If you've never been to one before, it's like there's somebody in the middle to monitor you, you go into this quiet room. And you sit at a cube, it's very much like what I, I had when I took my, my CBAP in Nashville, North Carolina. Um very similar to this. Only thing was, there were people taking it, you know, you see I, um. Oh, I didn't mention it here. Oh, distractions from others. When I was in there taking my CBAP. There were people that had like an open book exam and they had these huge binders. There were like four or five people and they're taking it, and they kept opening these huge binders and flapping there. That was distracting, but um. But I, I got through it. But yeah, you have to go there, you have to obviously schedule a time, you have to check in. They can give you a break if you need it. Um you know, you, you can't have anything, um they can either give you a whiteboard or one sheet of paper to write notes down. Especially if you're doing, if you're doing the CBAP and some financial calculations, it's good to have. Uh there are lots of locations to do that, but they're, they have different rules, so uh definitely look into that, plan to do that. Alright, um here's some exam tips, not the study tips, these are exam tips. Um yeah, like I said before, schedule. Um, yeah, like I said before, schedule the time that works best for you, plenty of rest. Um, I, I threw my tip in there, consider taking the test out of town if you wanna focus the final hours. I didn't necessarily plan that and just, it was funny because my wife said, why are you going to Asheville and why can't I go? And I was like, cause I'm gonna study the whole time. It's no fun. It's just gonna study. And then I'm gonna get up the next morning and take the exam and then I'm coming back home. Uh, so it was no vacation for me. And, and going, going out of town to do that. It was totally focused on, on taking the exam, but. Uh, definitely with the case studies, take your time. If you're doing a CBA, take your time, read through the case studies. Like I said, I sweated a lot about these case studies. Um, take your time on them. There are multiple questions per case study. Um, and here's another thing, if you think you know the right answer, it may not be. You have to think about, I've told, I told this to someone else. It's like you have to have a Babac hat to put on when you take the, the uh, certification exams. You know, we live in a world where, you know, things aren't completely by the book, by the Babac, you know, when we do business analysis. And don't think about what's, what you think is right. Think about what the Babac says is right when you're taking these exams. You could live in the real world on your job, but when you're taking the exams, definitely uh, live in the Babac world for that time. Um, use all the time you need for the exam too. That's a big one. Uh, don't stick with questions. If you don't like keep focusing on one question, flag it, move on. That's a good one. Um, go with your first instinct if you're unable to decide. That, that's something that someone told me. It's like, hey, usually your first instinct is right. If you're not hundred percent sure, flag it and come back to it, but go with your first instinct. Um, if you can take a break, um, take a break. Uh, you know, sometimes you need to step out, use a restroom, get a drink of water or something. You know, it's, it's worth it. Um, don't get too nervous, have fun. Well, that's easy to say. I was sweating bullets, uh, but uh, but still. Uh, make it fun though, as much as possible. It's fun if, when you click it and it says you passed, that's fun. Um, but don't get discouraged. Um, keep going and doing your best. I got discouraged in mine, honestly. Uh, I was like, oh gosh. How am I gonna explain to my wife that I have to dig this again? I'm gonna have to pay this fee again. She's gonna be mad at me. Uh, you know, she was, she wouldn't have been, but you know, I just was thinking about it. I was starting to get discouraged cause it's like, oh man. This wasn't what I thought it was gonna be. But you know, it actually was and I did really good. I actually did above average. It tells you if you do above average, below average or average. And I did above average on mine. So I was like, all right, yeah, I was so happy after that, but. But don't get discouraged. Um, here's some useful links. These are mostly to the certification handbooks and to some of these, um. Uh, this is about the Procter exams. And uh, and then the rest of these are, are some of those places with the. Uh, with the links to study or whatever. So these are good, these are good to have, uh, for sure. Yeah, and so, yeah, what's that? Um. Any questions? Or do you guys have any tips? Or have you've heard about, or have you taken any certification exams you wanna share?
I have a question.
Yes, please.
I'm so anxious to, um, ask if you get the results immediately after the exam.
Yeah, you do get the, uh, if I heard your question correctly, I'm sorry, I have a little trouble hearing, but um. Are you, are you asking if you get the results immediately after taking the exam?
Yes.
Yes, that's absolutely true. Yes. You, when you're done with your questions, you've answered all the questions, you kind of, uh, you submit. The exam, let's see if I have that graphic. You, you end the test essentially and it takes a couple of minutes. Oh, not a minute, but several seconds at least. Uh, and then it'll come back and it'll say, congratulations, you passed, something to that effect. And so, yeah, so it's. I don't, honestly don't know what it says when you fail. It's like, knock on what I have, fail one. I imagine it's probably similar, but um, uh, I said, sorry, you failed. You can take, retake it or whatever. But at least with a CBA, I'll say this, later on, IBA, they sent me a congratulation email, of course. The thank you, congratulations for passing. And then they gave me a rundown of how I did on the, on the test. They didn't go by question by question. You never will know, remember the questions you had, but they tell you by knowledge area or by exam topics. You know, in very general, whether you did below average or above average. Yeah, that's one thing. That's the feedback you get, but that's later. But yeah, immediately, immediately you'll find out whether you passed or not. Great question, a quick question. Um, a couple of quick things, just really before the end, we end here. Um, you know, if you looked at the Babac, have been a business analyst for a while. You're familiar with these six knowledge areas. These are the keys. This is really primarily what you're tested on in the C C B A and CBA exams. So it's good to understand what these are. Um, also the, the Business Analysis Core Concept Model is a, is a big one. Um, you know, that's a good one to, to make sure you know. And then um, knowing the perspectives, that's something that's important. Uh, I found on the CBA, knowing the different perspectives. Um, and then finally, knowing the techniques. So we have a, um, with East Tennessee, I've done a, uh, if you can believe it, we did a, um. A, a study set, one hour study session where we covered all of the fifty techniques. And that was very, we, we skimmed every one of them. So the next time, instead of skimming through. We, we did two sessions and still that wasn't enough. So the last time we did, uh, this topic on, on the Babac, all fifty techniques. We spent um, an hour, uh, three, three separate one hour sessions to go over the, all the fifty techniques. So, but definitely the, understanding these, um, and have a good, good foundation on the fifty techniques that are in chapter ten of the Babac is, is important. That's, that's all extra I wanted to share, but that's, that, that'll be included in your. Uh, the PDF that they send you. I think they're sending a PDF. They may send a PDF or they may send you a link to, to either this video. To, um, to the slides themselves, so I'll have to check with the, with the team about that to see how they, how they distribute that. But I'm really glad you all could join. Um, and I hope you, uh, hope you learned a little bit. And uh, you know, I'm certainly glad to uh, to be able to share with you tonight. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right. Hope you guys have a great, well, evening or morning. I, I see. Uh, Simon, you're, you're in New Zealand, so probably daytime there, right? So.
Yep, thank you.
Very good. Thanks for, thanks for showing, showing up and uh, being here for us. Thank you. Have a great evening, y'all.
Thank you.